Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Willmete zoning Board of Appeals. Ms. Roberts, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Boyer.
Here.
Mr. Robkey.
Here.
Mr. Schneider.
Here.
Mr. Serman.
Here.
Chairman Duffy.
Chair here. Ladies and gentlemen, for those of you new to our proceedings, the purpose of this board is to hear evidence on applications for variances from our zoning ordinance and on applications for special use. Based upon the evidence we hear this evening, we will make a recommendation to the Village Board of Trustees as to whether the applicant, applications that come before us this evening should be granted or denied. We will vote to recommend granting or denying each application for variation based on whether the application meets the standards of review set forth in Section 5.4. F of our village ordinance. Applications for special use will be considered based upon whether the standards of review set forth in Section 5.3. E of our village ordinance are met. The Village Board of Trustees will consider the recommendations we make this evening at their next regularly scheduled meeting on April 10th. Our recommendations to the board are advisory only. The Village Board has the final say on all applications and will make its own determination as to whether to grant or deny them. The Village Board is not legally bound by our recommendations. There's one small exception to this rule. If this board makes a negative recommendation with respect to an application, in order for the Village Board of Trustees to approve that application, a super majority of five Village Board members must vote to approve it rather than a simple majority of four. There's one other small peculiarity to our proceedings of which you should be aware. This board does not operate by a majority vote. We operate instead by a tyranny of four. In other words, no matter how many board members are present on a given evening, in order to get a positive recommendation from this board, an application must receive four affirmative votes. Ordinarily, this board consists of seven members. Tonight, however, due to a combination of vacancies and absences, only five members are present. Ms. Roberts says Assistant Directory, Director of Community Development sits with us tonight in an advisory capacity only and is not a voting member of the board. Please be aware therefore that a vote of three to two in favor of an application will technically go into the record as a negative recommendation with the legal effect that I have previously described. In recognition of this unusual feature of our procedure, when we do not have all members of the board present on a given evening, we give the applicants who are scheduled to come before us that night the option of requesting a continuance to the next available date on our schedule. The next available date for any application we would like to request a continuance is April 4th. There is no penalty for asking for a continuance. No such request will be held against you when your case is eventually heard. If you wish to ask for a continuance, however, you must do so at the beginning of your presentation before making any substantive arguments as to the merits of your case. Please also be aware that if you request a continuance, there's no guarantee as to how many board members will be present on the evening to which your case is continued. The cases we shall hear this evening will be heard in the order set forth on the pre-printed agenda located on the table near the door where you first came in. When your case is called, please proceed to the podium, state your name and address, and tell us exactly why your application meets the standards of review that are applicable to it. Each member of this board is a longtime resident of the village and has visited your property during the past week. In addition, we have received from village staff these green booklets containing all written information that you have submitted in support of your application, as well as any other correspondence the village has received. Accordingly, it is not necessary that you repeat what you have already stated in writing. Please just hit the high points with particular attention to why you believe your application meets the standards of review. After the applicant has had a chance to speak, we will open the podium to others who wish to speak either for or against the application. Everyone will be permitted to have their say, though we would ask that you keep your comments as short and to the point as possible. After we have heard all oral presentations, I'll close the evidence and the members of the board will discuss what they have heard and take a vote. Once the evidence is closed, no further testimony on the, on any application may be offered. The only people intended to speak during that part of the proceeding will be the members of the board. This meeting is a legal proceeding and all testimony tonight must be given under oath. If there are, if you are here and planning to testify tonight, I would ask that you raise your right hand at this time and be sworn. Do you swear or affirm that you will tell the truth in the testimony that you are about to give? If so, please say, "I do." You didn't have to stand, but I appreciate it. You guys want to say the Pledge of Allegiance, too? All right, sorry. Ms. Roberts, will you please call the first case of the evening?
This meeting originally has three cases noticed, so for those who were expecting to see two of our cases, they are not being heard tonight. 2018 Z1, 910 Locust Road, has been withdrawn by the applicants. And 2018 Z2, 3730 Lake Avenue, was originally intended to be on tonight, but the applicant had a conflict, so it's been rescheduled and there's no action that needs to be taken.
Okay.
Can I ask a question about that, Kate? What did we, what did we decide on the Lake Avenue thing the last time we looked at it? What was the?
Um...
Was that, what was our vote?
Vote? Did we?
Yeah, yeah, I believe it was a negative recommendation. Does that sound right?
It'd be a case. That's on the board, sorry. 3730 Lake, denied, yep.
Was it remanded back?
It, well...
Yeah, they, they offered to modify their plan and take another look at it, and so they're coming back with a revised plan.
Okay. So then we're going to revise the request?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So our next case is 2018 Z11, 1209 Middlebury Street. This is a request for a 428.66 square foot total floor area variation, an 18.19 foot front yard setback variation, a 1.42 foot minimum side yard setback variation, a 3.46 foot combined side yard setback variation, a one-foot side yard adjoining a street setback variation, 14.69 foot front yard eve setback variation, a 1.88 foot side yard porch setback variation, a 0.54 foot combined side yard eve setback variation, a 167 square foot front yard impervious surface coverage variation, and a variation to exceed the first floor height limit to permit the construction of a substantial addition and remodel that is classified as a new home.
You can all come up together, it's okay. Hi, welcome.
That made it sound more difficult than hopefully it is. Guess we'll tell you about, have you guys, I don't understand.
I'm sorry, since we're going to be on the record and the three people that watch our show.
Yes.
I need you to introduce yourselves, say where you live.
Sure, I'm Jason Sander. This is my wife.
Lucy Ann Sander.
Nice to meet you.
And we live at 1209 Middlebury Lane.
So you're current residents of the house?
Correct.
Okay, beautiful, thank you.
Yeah, so kind of as described, a lot of, it sounds like a lot of variances, but I think if you guys have seen the property or kind of looked at the, the map here, it's, in my opinion, one of the most unique homes in Willmete. I was actually born and raised here in Willmete. Lucy and I got married and moved out to California. I wanted to move back to Willmete to live closer to family, so we found this home which originally was 1210 Illinois Road. When we bought the home on Illinois Road, when it were at Curves, there's really no sidewalk, there's no parking, and no one could ever find our house. We were concerned potentially the village, police, anybody, since nobody could find the home. We thought it might be better, since it made more sense, to change the address to Middlebury Lane. With that, we now have kind of a house that's reversed and on an angle and doesn't really conform to any standard a lot. So I guess what we're looking to do is that kind of what, for all the people that are watching at home, what we're looking to do is eliminate some of the difficulties that we have on a day-to-day basis and make our home a little more cohesive and normal. The house was kind of a hodgepodge of, it was originally from the story, as the story goes, built in the 1850s and then added on as a home in the 1890s. And then there was an addition in the 60s on the second floor and then another addition, I believe, in the 80s from what I've been told. So it's kind of a, a mix. The house is two different colors and doesn't really fit the norm of a Middlebury Lane home. We do have a detached garage that is a little bit too small for our family as it sits now. We cannot park two cars in the garage. We basically have a large one-car garage and an exterior stairway that we're looking to eliminate from the, from the front of the home because we've had people slip on ice and fall. So we're trying to move that to get the entrance of the home onto the ground level. And then we would have a, an attached garage with an easy, safe indoor entry with stairs for indoor, obviously safer for no ice, hopefully.
Then you're enclosing the kind of courtyard area that's been created by all the building and...
Correct. As it sits today, when you walk up those stairs, this was the back of the house, you enter into a kitchen. Most homes in the area, most homes I've ever been in my life, you don't enter into a kitchen. It's a small kitchen. It's not really cohesive, doesn't really work for our family. So yes, we would move that little courtyard area between the, what I say the two homes, it's really one combined home, but that little courtyard area would then be the kitchen room.
Could you put 1.8 on the, on the...
So on that table next to you, there's an overhead camera that shows down, so it could be displayed. So if you put one of the...
1.8.
Put what, sir?
There's a, in the green packet.
Lisa, while they're doing that, I might have missed it. Has the curb cut been approved?
It's an existing curb cut, so modification to it.
I didn't see a curb cut on Illinois Road.
It's not on Illinois, it's on Middlebury.
To the existing garage. So Middlebury was acting kind of as the alley for the house originally. And that's where the driveway was.
Zoom out? That's good, that's good, that's helpful, thank you.
Got it.
But it shows a new driveway, so it is a new curb cut.
You have to change the curb cut?
It shows a new driveway.
Yeah, did you see that?
A curb cut moves?
It took me a while because this is a complex...
That was interesting.
...place. What you're net adding, and I wanted to ask what the existing floor area variation is without doing anything. I assume it's already exceeding, but, so the only thing, the net addition, correct me if I'm wrong, is that kitchen to fill in that guy. Is that correct?
Correct.
And that's a one-story addition?
Correct.
How big is that?
I think it's a hundred and something.
About a hundred and twenty square feet. They're already over by the other difference.
And then you're adding probably some net square footage on the garage, right?
I could speak as long as you move over to the microphone.
I'm sorry. They're directional, so you kind of have to be...
Hello, I'm Mark Goland, I'm the architect for the project. This drawing will help. In the lower left, as you look at the drawing, is a dotted rectangle on an angle. That's the current detached garage. And you can see how close it is to the front property line and how it restricts the open space between us and the immediate neighbor to the south. We want to replace it with an attached garage that actually results in more open space between us and the neighbor and more open space between us and the front property line. So that's, that's sort of a win-win.
So what is the front entrance to the, to the, to the house?
The front entrance to the house is where I'm pointing here, and that door exists already, and that's at ground level. Currently, the front entrance to the house walks up these outdoor stairs, which I've shown dotted because we're removing them, and into this box, which is currently their kitchen. You can even see faintly the dotted lines where the appliances were. So you come up this outdoor wet icy stair. You go into their kitchen. What we've done for the most part is to repurpose existing boxes. The current house does have a room here, and it'll continue to be sort of a den sitting room. What was the kitchen becomes the mudroom after we've driven into our new garage and entered the house through stairs that aren't vulnerable to the weather. This is the front door of the house, and that exists now. All of this exists now except this.
Right, right.
Which is infilling a courtyard between two buildings. You really can't see it from anywhere unless you walk up to the house. That's where we're transplanting the kitchen. So they'll live at this level, which is the current living area. It's just so far from where you enter the house. It's like two different buildings, we're trying to unify it. We'd like some shelter out in front of the front door because the kids can't play back here off of Illinois Road. And the idea is here, you'll be able to observe them as they play, although it's your front yard, it's the safer of the two yards. Middlebury is not nearly as heavily traveled as Illinois Road. What's listed as master bedroom is a box that exists right now. It's their current living room. What's listed as master bathroom is a box that exists right now. It's their current dining room. So we're, we're moving appliances and furniture around more than we're moving any of the skeleton of the building. There currently is a portico that wraps around the back here, which we're removing, that's why it's shown as dotted. So that, again, adds to the light and air to the Illinois roadside and to the neighbor side.
That's a lot of the character of the front of the house.
But it's the back of the house.
I understand.
Right, but we're certainly going to clean up what remains of the building, but it's, I mean, we could leave it if you prefer, but we don't really want access into what's becoming the master bedroom.
No, I understand.
It's not exactly safe and usable as it is right now. The railings are, I wouldn't go out there nor would I let my kids go out there.
When we actually purchased the house and we had an inspector, he recommended us never to let anybody out because if anybody really got hurt, it would be our, our own issue. And it's really interesting, so the railing is extremely low, but also the flooring for that, it's like, you know, it's in a huge slope. So we have never been there unless we had people knocking on that door.
Yeah, just when, you know, is, you know, our role is to, you know, observe the property as it exists right now and see how, you know, your changes are going to apply to it. You know, as you drive down Illinois Road, you see all the decorative, you know, trim of that front porch. And you answered one of my questions, which was, "When was this house built?" 1850s. It looks like an old, old house with all that trim. So I, I understand, just that was like the character of the house from Illinois Road.
We certainly want to keep that character, it's important. You know, I grew up here in Willmete in a house that was built in the 1890s as well, so I defer that. We're not looking to...
No, it's just kind of, you know, you're removing it all now, and I understand why. I mean, you're, the, the drawing of what the house is going to be looking like from Middlebury is, is great, you know, relative to what it is, so. Not complaining, just stating.
And it does sort of mitigate where we're adding because the floor area question, which you mentioned, sir, is in large part due to the fact that because our first floor is up a number of steps, and our first floor therefore is this much above the ground, the basement counts against our allowable floor area. And we're, and I even asked staff when we were doing this, their basement is about six and a half feet tall. It's wet, it's dark, it's rarely used as storage. And I said, "Why does the zoning ordinance set a maximum height for the first floor above grade when we're well within the limits of the overall height of the building?" So two identical buildings next door to each other, if one guy's first floor is here and one guy's here, you can't even tell it from the outside, but they calculate totally differently on the FAR. And the answer was, "Because we don't like the look of front doors being halfway up the wall."
But it's, it's, some neighborhoods have that, some don't.
Right, this is an R1C and this is one of the, so in the R1C district, they said, you know, people just, I, I would guess nobody would want it in any district, but they don't like a lot of big outdoor stairs climbing to a door that's halfway up the wall. It just looks bad. We're eliminating it. We're eliminating the stair and the door. Now it's going to enter like a house normally does. So if it weren't for the charge of the basement, we would not be over on the floor area ratio.
Nope, get it. So could you just, using this drawing that you have up right now, can you kind of, with your finger, highlight where the basement is?
Yeah.
Well, there's another...
There's that foundation thing.
Turn to page.
I know, I just wanted to see it relative to the house.
Oh, wait, this is a good one here.
Yeah, 1.5.
I'm going to put the before. See if I can orient it the same way. This is the before of what's underground. You're seeing here the foundation of the garage we're removing.
Yep.
You're seeing this box and this box are the basement. Their headroom is six foot six. The stair going down to them, you can see where the winders are up above. This, you have to be a gymnast to get down these stairs. And this part is slab on grade. And this is the courtyard where above we're filling in for our kitchen, and that'll be slab. And so we'll be entering at ground level rather than climbing the outdoor stairs.
And then on the interior, you've got that stair marked on the...
Then this is the before of the house. Over here, you're seeing the garage we want to remove. Here's the stairs we're going to remove. Here's the portico with, I call it covered porch with, your blessings, we'll remove. What was family room becomes master sleeping area. What was dining room becomes master bath. What, what was this outdoor courtyard becomes the kitchen. We'll enter here, and this then becomes the normal living level. And we've made a stair to the basement from the main level, so we can eliminate this one, which is deadly.
Oh, I see down.
Right.
And up, I got it.
And I guess, I'm here to answer any questions you have.
The second floor, you're not modifying it?
We're, we're taking...
Because I didn't see it in the package.
Nothing that you see on the outside.
You're not changing there.
This is the before of the second floor. We're moving the master bedroom down to the first floor, and we're going to just split this into two rooms, a smaller secondary bedroom and a den. It's nothing that you even see from the outside, but nothing that affects the skeleton of the building. If I orient this, the way you were just looking at everything, it's there, okay? And it's a very strange light, so we think, we think it's, meets the test of uniqueness. As far as the test of, you know, the, the other categories, we're basically taking a house that has a lot of zoning encroachments now and reducing the zoning encroachments. We're moving further from the property lines. So I think, you know, sometimes when a client asks me, "What, what is a zoning ordinance? What's the point?" And I, oh, this is probably oversimplifying it, but I say it strikes a balance between the rights of the individual and the good of the community. And I think in this case, it's a win-win because what's good for them actually improves the situation for the surroundings as well.
So I've got to ask Lisa a question. You know, we've got, there's some side yard adjoining a street setback, isn't there?
Yes.
Yeah. So when I was looking at this, I couldn't understand how we end up saying that this then is the side yard because this is what, this is where the street is. This is not adjoining a street.
Right, it's just that piece off the back.
Just this one angle piece. So how do we determine front yard in this case? Because it is on Middlebury, is that what we're saying? Or is this section that is on, that...
Right, ordinarily, the narrower frontage would be the front law line.
Right.
But the zoning administrator has the authority to determine that the front is on Middlebury since that is sort of the prevailing development pattern of block, and that that makes more sense.
Right, because as, if, without knowing that, I would say that this piece that fronts onto Illinois Road would be the front yard.
Right.
Okay. All right, so the zoning administrator had some leeway there to make it...
Interpretation, yes.
An interpret, okay, all right. Thank you. Do we have any questions for the applicant? No, no? Wow. I do have a question because we had this issue just recently with a split-level home, which in a way is what your home is. So your basement is over, it's like about six and a half foot in height. You say there's a rec room down there and you got a laundry room down there. And you're going to continue to keep those rooms as they are, right?
No, the laundry room is coming up. Let me go back to the proposed...
I mean, we're, we're leaving the room the same, the actual washer and dryer are being moved.
For convenience, right?
For convenience, right.
Yeah. And what will the basement be used as?
Storage.
So it's dry enough for storage?
Parts of it is dry.
Yeah.
So we used, there are about two rooms that we, you know, we put it in box and all that, but the middle room and the, where is the laundry room now, it gets quite wet.
Oh.
But I, when I was pregnant with our second kid, I, I fell down that stairs and I thought that I had lost the baby.
Oh!
It was, and then I fell again afterwards, but I wasn't pregnant, and it was really bad.
Stairs going to the basement are not...
A high shape.
High shape, and they're, they're not...
Yeah, they're, they're original stairs.
The basement itself, I mean, neither, I'm not that tall, so I don't really have a problem, but some of, when we have taller friends over, they wouldn't be able to get into our basement anyway. So I, it's used strictly for storage.
Are there windows in the basement, or is it window wells?
There are some windows.
They're, they're above ground. Part of, part of the... See the windows which I'm showing around the perimeter? And one of them, just for safety, we're enlarging to become an escape window because none of these technically meet the escape requirement right now. But this, two-thirds of what you're seeing there is, is wet. We, we did some draw, some interior photos of the basement. I don't know if those made it to your packet, but it's...
No, they didn't.
It's not good.
Do you have any of those? Could we, could we see them?
I might.
Lisa, why is this considered new construction, new home?
Because of the addition in the, they're, based on what information we have, we thought they were gutting the building. It's possible that it's not going to rise to that level, but this way, if they're doing enough work that, or in the field while they're doing the work, it turns out that they need to do more than they anticipated, we're calling out everything.
The roof, right?
Yeah.
Correct, that's my understanding.
I think so, I may have to print it out.
But the kitchens move in, so a lot of plumbing's moving around.
In terms of...
It may be a close call.
As equivalent to a new home.
Right, we'd only want to see it once.
Sorry, is it all right if we just keep a picture of the basement?
Absolutely.
In your opinion, as an architect...
Later.
Can I scroll?
Sure. Nothing, nothing too unsafe. You might see my kids if you scroll one way or the other, but...
In your opinion, as an architect, does the basement have any rooms that would provide natural light and ventilation to allow them to be considered habitable?
The one room, this room right here, the window it has meets light and vent for that room, none of the others do. So none of the others could become habitable rooms without changing the windows.
Without some modification.
And technically, they don't meet the height minimum for a basement. So that, this whole rectangle is adding 900 square feet to our FAR tally, which is why that's part of our request, but it's not a usable basement.
Also, also the basement walls are masonry?
Yeah.
So why is it considered, is it because it is, the ceiling is five feet above grade?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe it's four feet, eight inches.
Four feet eight, and that's what triggers the basement being tall, Four feet eight, and that's what triggers the basement being tal, considered part of the tally.
I'm seeing somebody dancing here.
That could be me.
No, one of your children.
Be careful.
It's nice.
Is he in the basement?
No, maybe he's in the basement.
My kids have never gone to the basement, and I have a six-year-old.
There's our laundry room now.
Yeah, 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 this was one of them that we were able to determine the wall.
Not exactly finished space.
No, no, which, you know, the other case that we had, we asked to have an idea, and yes, so...
So this is this picture here?
Yes, you have that.
Consider you've been into the show.
It's all right.
You know, you call it a show.
So you were asking, the, the walls are concrete?
They're, well, up to grade, and then it's just solid brick above that, there's no insulation down there.
Okay. Thank you.
So the key is seeing that this really is a basement, as opposed to, you know, trying to determine from someone else's description.
Right, right.
Yeah, and that the usability of this space is nominal. All right, any other questions for our applicant? Nothing, we're all good? All right. There's nobody here to ask if they want to speak for or against this case, so I'm just going to jump to make sure that you've given us everything, I assume you have, that you support your case, and I'm going to close the case, and I'm going to ask if there's a board member who'd like to make a motion. Mr. Robkey's motion.
Regarding to case 2018 Z11, move to recommend granting a request for 428.66 square foot, 5.69% total floor area variation, an 18.19 front yard setback variation, a 1.42-foot minimum side yard setback variation, 3.46 combined side yard setback variation, a one-foot side yard adjoining setback variation, a 14.69-foot front yard eve setback variation, a 1.88 side yard porch setback variation, a 0.54 combined side yard eve setback variation, a 167-square-foot 9.88 front yard impervious surface coverage variation, and a variation to exceed the first floor height limit to permit the construction of a substantial addition and remodel that is classified as a new home at 1209 Middlebury Street in accordance with the plans submitted.
Thank you, do I have a second? All right, Mr. Boyer, second, thank you. Mr. Robkey, your motion.
I think the key issue, I think, you know, looking at the various setback issues, it's an incredibly unique site, and the way it's situated, and the improvements, for the most part, will improve all the setback conditions, as far as I can tell, or at a minimum, keep them as they are now. I think the key issue for us is the floor area variation. You made reference to a particular case from a few weeks ago. You know, this is quite different. This was never intended to be primary living space, it really is a basement, it is not finished space, doesn't have natural light and ventilation in most of the areas to allow it to be habitable or converted to a bedroom. I, I think it's an improvement, and I can support it.
Mr. Boyer?
I agree. Ten variance requests, and the two that were most interested in FAR, you know, was driven by the, the first floor height, and then with that basement square footage being added in, this makes sense that, that we grant the variance as a given relief. I'm in support.
All right. Mr. Schneider?
I think this makes a lot of sense. I think this will make it much more livable, and will fit the requirements and the variations. What they're adding is minimal, I think it makes a lot of sense, I can support it.
Mr. Sherman? And I'm, I would just say they're minimizing some of the issues right now with eliminating the porch along Illinois and shifting the garage over, so it does open up the space more for the neighbor to the south. So I can support it.
So I, I looked at this, you know, it's a very, very unique situation, where you've got just, what, like six sides to the lot, it seems like, and, you know, Illinois Road coming through, there's probably one of the first houses in that section of the village right there, so it's just unique. So that created a lot of your setback issues. The FAR issue, you know, the only question there was about the basement, is that something that it was really usable space, and it, and it didn't seem that way. Thank you for bringing in pictures, it really helps us see what we are trying to make a decision on. So I thought the uniqueness of this, the sighting of the house on the lot, the uniqueness of the shape of the lot, created the hardships that, that presented, you know, the problem, the reason you had to come and ask for so many variances. So I think this also meets all the standards of review, and I too will support it. So why don't we take a vote?
Mr. Robkey?